Yeah, I'm not sure if you're muted or what, but we can't hear you at this point. I've started to record, so whenever you're ready to go, we should be all set.
All right, so I called the meeting to order. And thank you, everyone, for joining us. And if I can have a motion to approve the minutes of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
I'm second it. Being that's my birthday.
Hey, that's right. All right. So any questions or discussion on the minutes? You know, hear any? So those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close abstain motion carries. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to address? I see we do. It's. Dan, I see you. And Penny, why don't you go first with stating your name and address and. You can go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Penny, eleven oh one Chamberlain Hill Road, City. I just wanted to comment briefly on the agenda right on my CM road. Just that kind of an FYI update from my perspective, I walk in the area just about every day. And it's becoming a real kind of a hangout or gathering area from dirt bikes to quads to going up over the wood chips and knocking them down. They're pretty well flattened out at this point, about half on each side. So it's just if you have it out in the area, it's and there's, you know, there's all kinds of peel outs or donuts down in the center. It's they know that it's difficult for public safety, the police to to get that to even pass through, of course, they can't pass through, so they're they're kind of there's folks hanging out a lot, more than we're ever. And so for what that's worth, it'd be interesting to hear what the what the status is. I did notice today that I think it was either yesterday or today. There was the mowing, there was some mowing started on the edges, which was, which is good. And so we look forward to hearing the update. I had a neighbor that wanted to speak, but he's not here yet, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We do have, we do have a plan we're going to share with you tonight. Okay, all right.
Good.
I'll let Director Holden go to the next.
Sure. We have one other member of the public I can see. Ashwin, did you want to speak as well?
Hello. Yeah, I didn't have anything specific to say. I had sent some correspondence for the last meeting. Bottom line is I do support the reopening of Lyceum. It sounds like we're headed down that path now. So I don't want to belabor that point. The only point I did want to make is that a lot of the issues in the area seem to be related to drainage in general of Sumner Brook. During the last meeting, that was an excellent presentation that was done by the engineers, the study that they did. So I certainly support their findings and their information and hope that Sumner Brook can be the level can be reduced because I think that will help Lyceum as well as the other roadways in the area a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashwin. Anyone else?
Do not see anyone else from the public present.
Okay, I'm gonna call close public comment and move to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
None this month.
Okay. So I move to new business and that's twenty twenty-two Connecticut Recycling Conference, Kim O'Rourke.
So something that is always good for us to attend helps Kim stay stay on top of you know, all the current and you know, potential future activity in the recycling world. So I would recommend that you be able to attend that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we love her to attend. Councilman Pessina.
Second, I'm coming forward.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? I don't hear any. So those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Abstained. Motion carries. Thank you. So we're gonna now move to old business and the first item on it is Lyceum Road.
So it had our chief engineer take a look at, you know, the least expensive method that we could do. And that generally is an overlay where we would put, you know, like inch and a half, two inches of pavement over the existing road. But based on the condition of the road, I he does not recommend that, that that would not hold up well. So the the least that we could do for, you know, make the road in acceptable condition would be to remove all the pavement and then put back our normal four inches of class one and class two pavement on top of that. I can share my screen so you can see what the estimate is.
How many inches was that, Director?
So that would be four inches. So it'd be two inches of the class one and two inches of the class two, which is what we normally normally do on the roads.
Thank you.
Sure. So here, hopefully you can see, let me zoom out a little bit, I guess. So this is the estimate to remove the pavement. You can see this is somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-five thousand or so for the pave, just the pavement alone to put down. And then with, you know, the milling and then the work that we would have to do, including a little bit of guard rail, guide rail out there, the crossings. So that was, that's what we we consider the, you know, least expensive option to to create a, you know, improved road out there.
And what, and we expand this little, so the total cost is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand approximately?
Correct. To remove all the pavement, do some sub base grading and then do the, you put the pavement back down. So this doesn't include any of the underdrain or what have you that we were recommending for the larger project, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. This would just be, you know, to get a smooth surface out there.
All right. Questions? I have one, but I'll wait till other people.
I don't know if the public can ask a question now or?
We could waive the rules. We have a small group here. Are you okay with the public asking questions?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Just a couple of quick questions for Chris. The, so when you say class one, that's the binder and then class two is the finish coat. Is that basically like the one?
Yep, exactly. Yeah. So the class one is the binder, the larger aggregate, and then you get the smaller aggregate for the surface.
Okay, I'm an old school, so I refer to it as binder.
Yeah, yep, no doubt, yep. Now, now the DOT refers to it as super pave, so point five and the S point three seven five, so it's changed even more now.
Yeah, thank you. And the, so the total is one thirty-nine? Is that what we're talking?
Correct.
Yeah, that's pretty reasonable. Was there any consideration to clear out the swales on each side?
Yeah, we would do that regardless. We have to do that regardless of what else we do out there. Yeah.
Okay, so it's the whole road or is it just the area that's needs?
I believe this is end to end.
Okay. Yeah, that's how it was done prior. So that 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 sounds pretty good. If you don't mind, can the neighbor ask a question or make a comment?
Sure.
I'm Pete Sullivan. I live three houses up the street here. I use Lyceum Road all the time. And one of the things I noticed is that road started to go to heck when the drainage on the side that's beat up now kind of fell apart and it wasn't draining, so there was water under the road all the time. And in past years, we're driving over the road for thirty years, forty years now. In past years, as long as it's dry on both sides, the road is fine. It doesn't fall apart. But when the drainage went to heck, it fell apart. And my observation over the years with this and a lot of other things is ditches fill in, cave in, are easily plugged and so on and so forth. But a swale is relatively easy to maintain. You can have bad moat one angle and then the other angle once a year, maybe twice a year, but probably once a year. And it's easily maintained. And if it doesn't cave in like a ditch does, and that particular piece of road is really easy to drain because it's downhill to the center, which is where the brook is, Harris Brook. And that's not Harris Brook, Sumner Brook, yeah. And it's it's downhill in both directions. So it's it's easily drained. The other side, it's for this reason, that reason, it's kind of self draining, kind of. Although it's got to get tuned up every once in a while. But this side, I think we made soils in there one time. Now, just go mow it once, once, twice a year and like they do mow everything here around here. And I think you'd be fine. And a lot of people use that road. If we put a sign up there, there was going to be a hearing or something like that, you'd have a lot of attention. I tell you, I come down this road all the time and there's either somebody coming out of that road or turning into the road and I follow them down the road or they follow me down the road. And now, all those people using Wilcox, Wilcox is a residential street. And there's kids on bicycles, the whole nine yards, where this is nothing. And you go out to Milbrook, Milbrook is residential, but it's a much wider street and it's got a double white line on it and everything else. So it is, there's a real issue. There's a fair amount of traffic, a lot more than a reasonable person would think, looking at that grubby little road. So.
Sounds like they're gonna open.
Okay, so you can tell I'm in favor of opening.
Yeah. Well, I use it too. So I have used it in the past. I live too far from it. So any other, any, go ahead, Councilman Pessina.
Last night, the fire district commissioners met. And bottom line is, as we know, we've already supported the fact that we wanted the road open. I guess, Chris, what's your best guess as to a target date to have that thing completed and open? If I can report it back to the chair.
So I don't know where I could guess we'd have to go for an appropriation to the council to get the hundred forty thousand dollars. So I guess that would be probably two months because I don't think, I don't know if we can make the deadline for this month's common council meeting. I think we had some other ideas, didn't we, Councilman?
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to.
If I could, yeah, if I could ask Director Holden, perhaps there's, there's a couple of options for long term. I see the hundred and thirty-nine is long term because we have to go through some steps. It's possible, I guess, that we could find the money in a road bond. And ask the council to waive, to add that to a road bond and then it comes out of a bond, correct?
Yeah.
Director Holden?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I believe that the based on the bond language, you are able to add additional.
Yeah, we're, we're able to do that. So that's a much better option than asking to take it out of the general fund because it's bond money, you know. But but my question for the commission to consider is that, yeah, we know what we can do, what we can, we can get it on the agenda for for approval out of a road bond. That takes a month or two, or at least two. I don't want to be too optimistic. But in the meantime, would should we consider, we just purchased a hot box. I think it's arriving next week. And that's a patch sophisticated patch mechanism where they come in and the box actually heats up to what, two, three hundred degrees tar and and patches up these huge holes and just to get it open.
I would suggest, you know, we do something, you know, obviously. So, yeah, I would suggest that that is possible in that if you know, moving forward, that we would have, you know, some time to make a decision on, you know, mid to long term.
Yeah, then we have a chance to decide what's the best option.
I would just caution that if we start getting, you know, because we will be just, you know, filling potholes and trying to make it as best we can. You know, with minimal cost that, you know, if we start getting reports again of car damage or what have you, then we would have to, you know, take precautions again to protect the city's interests.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess one side of it is is obviously in pretty really bad shape. The hot box is not entirely without cost. What's the cost per per ton?
The asphalt cost per ton is probably a hundred plus dollars a ton. Let's see what we have here. So when we're buying it just by the ton for our patching process, it's probably somewhere in that neighborhood. And then, you know, we have to estimate how many tons, you know, we would need out there. But we do have general funds that we get from the city for improved road maintenance and unimproved road maintenance that we could use to fill in the potholes and use the equipment that we have. And again, so that's a hot box. It's not a paving box. So it's not going to be like, you know, like we're paving the road. It just keeps the asphalt at a temperature that we're able to work it for a longer period of time.
It's actually, I went to the demonstration. It's vastly different than the guy shoveling tire out of the back of a of a giant truck. This is a little bit more sophisticated. And the, the, it's almost, the tire is almost, ends up in a glue state when it hits the ground, you know, so it's pretty solid, but it's not paving, you know, it's patching, but better than the guys coming out with the shovels.
Yes, this is, you know, I've been working towards this for a little while, as you know, that this is one of my biggest priorities is getting this out there so that we are able to have the compactor and have it easily accessible on a lift so that we can make repairs that'll stay around for a while as opposed to the, you know, the cold patch or what have you that we usually throw down and, you know, next rainstorm it pops out. So hopefully this will be, this will be a much longer, you know, better fix for potholes.
Yeah, could we make it a target date of July first to do, if we use the hot box?
Well, so we're, we're going to be renting it for two weeks or so, starting next week. So we can to get out there, you know, within the next two weeks to make repairs and then, you know, as the commissioner would like, we can open the road back up pending, you know, make sure that, you know, as long as there's, we don't start getting a whole bunch of reports again about the car damage or what have you, we'll, you know, keep going in that direction.
So what you're talking about essentially then is around the first or second, we do June, we open it up. And then when it comes time, based on, you know, Councilman Nacera's suggestion, use excess from the road bond money, then we can do a better job, as you described, at least maybe in the month of August or start in September.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that, I mean, that would help the residents. I mean, there, you know, we get, Dan is on the commissioner with me. He knows the amount of of questions we're getting all the time. So that would, that would restore the faith in us for the South District residents that we can get that done by the, by the middle of June. Open it up, just to what Dan was saying. Because it, it becomes a place where where they're going to hang out. We don't want people hanging out.
No, no.
So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Yeah, I do want to give credit to Director Holden, who orchestrated the hot box because it's vastly improved process that our city needs, especially now with declining resources. Yeah. Dan? You're muted, Dan.
There we go. Sorry about that. We'll, we'll help get the word out to the community with the plan. It's an excellent plan. It's well thought out and appreciate the efforts of the director to look at all the different options and then combine them along with the commissioners to to get this resolved. Much appreciated.
Thank you. I see someone else who came on, Director Holden. I don't know if Ange- Angela wanted to say anything?
I think he's muted. Angela, you're muted.
No, he's back. He's live.
Oh, okay.
I know work be working.
He's unmuted, but maybe his microphone's not working.
Yeah.
Something's on.
Who is it?
Chamberlain, Chauncey Road.
Okay.
Well, we can get, you know, Angela could email us. If like any questions.
Or if you wanted to type into the chat box there, you could type in a message to us if you, if you need to.
So thank you, everyone. We will, of course, have this on the agenda for next month. Hopefully by then it's open with the hot box and we got the our dirt bikes under control.
Yeah.
And.
I put mine away.
And, you know, we have a, we have a summer that has as little rain as possible, so this thing doesn't all fall apart again. Any other questions from anyone? My CM road. All right, we're gonna move to the next three. We have Mike Doherty here, the rec center. That's pool and splash pad and the multi use trail. So we'll just run those in a row. We'll start with Director Holden giving us an update.
Who's that?
That's.
What's his name?
Chris.
Yep, so yeah, the recreation center is really coming along good. We've got, you know, the solars coming in, we got the different contractors, we probably have three or four different contractors out there that are coordinating between the contractors finishing up through the O and G contract, Beeman School project. And then the new contractors with Second Dino and the HVAC and energy contract, things are really moving forward. Kathy's been able to, Director Leckwitz has been able to move into our office. We did have, I don't want to say scare, but we moved her in on a Tuesday and then Wednesday we were going to shut her power off, but we ran into a problem with the switch. So we're still, we're working with Eversource to to make that repair on the main switchgear to get into the the building. So we're moving along quickly right now.
Any questions on the rec center? Kathy, do you have any, anything to add?
No, just a huge shout out to Chris and all of his work. It's great that the staff has been able to move in. It's had domino effects at the senior center. The staff's been able to all come back downstairs into the administrative offices. And being able to get settled before super busy camp season has been great. And it's, we're just getting more and more excited about the possibilities when we're all ready to open in the fall.
Yep. And a shout out to you, Kathy, because you have orchestrated the move and it's, it's impressive even in its baby form, infant form. So and thank you, Director Holden, for pushing it. Councilman Pessina?
Yeah, just a question for Kathy. Do you intend to put out a press release for people that need to have, you know, contact with your recreation department registrations, et cetera? Because if you don't, and if you probably have already done, they're going to be going to the senior center. They won't have contact with you or your staff. So I think a press release or some kind of a release to the public of that's where they're going to go, signing of camps.
Yeah, we can do that. We did post on Facebook that we were moving. We still have a department clerk who lives at the senior center who services both departments. So our philosophy is we will serve the public where they arrive, whether it's at the senior center or whether it's at the rec center. And we have staff at both locations that can provide that service. We were not ready to make it have a lot of foot traffic in the building until we had. If you walked into the lobby this last week, you would have seen it was quite a disaster in terms of boxes. And so we find, I finally had loaded up the city car with a ton of cardboard this afternoon to be recycled, Chris. And so now we feel like we're actually in a space where we can, and we're going to have that cleaned tomorrow. So I feel like we're in a space now where we can be more public about that. And so we will be proactive about it. But right now, our philosophy is we will serve the public wherever they arrive.
Yeah, so that's good because at least then, then more formally you can put out a press release, being that you're covered there. And you're all set. That's fine. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions on the rec center? Great progress. We have to have a meeting out there soon, so we'll do that. Okay. So we're gonna then move to, that's pool and splash pad.
Mike, if I can just start off and then I'll share my screen. So we received the bids. We had a bid opening maybe a week and a half ago now. Or maybe just last week, I guess last week. And so we get the bids in, I'll share the summary table. I emailed that out to the commissioners. And so we can start running through that. And Mike, if you'd like to, just kind of summarize, you know, our, your estimate versus where the prices came in. I'll start sharing now.
Okay, so really what we kind of saw across the board in terms of the pricing was a on average, I think it's down at the bottom there about twenty-three percent difference in our cost estimate versus the low bidder, which was Fuji at a New Haven. It's not entirely surprising, not necessarily what we wanted to see, but the last time we had updated our estimate was, I believe, December and the bid documents weren't advertised until February. So during that time, there was, you know, price fluctuations and things happening that we didn't necessarily account for because we didn't revisit this while the bid prices were out or while the bid documents were out. So just like kind of all the projects we're seeing, it's hard to kind of nail down the prices at this time. So you can kind of see things are kind of all over the place, even between some of the bids of each of the three. For instance, the building, the two other bidders were very close to each other in their bids and then Fuji was quite low compared to their bids. So and actually lower than our estimate. But their site preparation number is, you know, three times as high as our bid or our estimate and the other two bidders. So you know, it's sometimes hard to to tell where contractors are going to try to put their money and we do see a number of times the site prep getting kind of a heavy load put into it because they know they can get paid upfront for some of that. Regardless, if the city decides to move forward with accepting the low bid, we would ask for a detailed breakout of their pay items here so that they're not certainly just being paid out of these buckets of money. They're going to be broken down into more detail if the project does move forward. pay items here, so that they're not certainly just being paid out of these buckets of money. They're gonna be broken down into more detail, um, if the project does uh, move forward. So I can certainly address any specific numbers here. Um, we did see kind of the site work take up a, a large portion of the, of the difference between the bid and our estimate. We did add some scope um, to some of the work of the site during bidding, which probably added a few hundred thousand dollars. But again, it's kind of, it's kind of what we're seeing across the board on most of the jobs that were bidding at this time, to, to have a average to twenty percent increase over bid prices that we've been seeing in the past.
And Mike, some of the changes were based upon a late change to the water, water line?
Yeah, we've received a, a good amount of comments from the water department and s- and water and sewer uh, that we had to incorporate after we issued the bid document, so in an addendum. Um, which, you know, it, it again, didn't add, you know, millions of dollars, but it did add some uh, cost to the project.
And, and then what, if you wanna have questions on this, we can go through this and then I got a summary table, uh, uh, that I can move to next, once we're done with this.
Any questions for Mike? I've had a chance to look at this. Just a little s- a side note, um, O and G told us that um, uh, we are, we hit the, we hit the market just right with Beeman Middle School, because if we were doing it now, we have about thirty percent more than we had allocated. And the rec center is also um, lucky because it's a renovation.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not even just material costs. We're, even just this project, we had to extend the bid, I think a week, a week and a few days.
Right.
Um, the contractors are having trouble just getting subcontractors to sign on to bid it. So there's a labor shortage in terms of a lot of contracts.
Questions for Mike? Alright, I guess we're gonna go on to the next slide.
Mr. Chair, just fine, who's the lowest bidder? Was, it's hard because half of it's not printing out.
Uh, CJ Fuji at a New Haven.
CJ Fuji, okay, out of New Haven, and what was his total bid?
Uh, seven million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty zero cents.
One hundred and eighty. Hey Chris, can you um, make a hard copy and throw it in the council members in my box of this, because when I tried to print it out, I'm going in getting, getting uh, Marshall. Be helpful. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you should, put it in everybody's box if you don't mind, Chris.
Sure, no problem.
Alright, thanks.
So, then uh, what Mike did was we then, we put on a ten percent contingency. And then also the uh, inspection fee, cause we're gonna want uh, Mike's company out there, uh, inspecting, making sure, you know, concrete's what it should be, the building process, the pool components. Uh, so when we threw on the ten percent contingency and the inspection fee, we came up to about eight point nine million dollars. And so like I said, I have a summary table that summarizes how um, I'm proposing uh, to pay for uh, to pay for that. So if you can see, let's see, solar, eight point eight five four. Do you see the new table here now with uh, some of the parks uh, components on here? Did it change, or are you still seeing the old, the other one?
It starts with Moody?
Yeah, yes sir. So, uh, based on um, the current projects, uh, being able to uh, having transfer Country Club Road over to the uh, youth, you know, Middletown Youth Soccer, uh, and the, the uh, status of the other projects. Uh, I've proposing uh, that we make these transfers. So for Moody School, uh, we would transfer three hundred thousand dollars. That re- that allows uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars still to be uh, for any uh, improvements that we have out there. Uh, Hubbard Park, that's the uh, Little League Field. We've already done some improvements down there. Uh, we've, we've constructed dugouts, uh, we've put in lights. Uh, so I s- said that we would need three hundred thousand dollars left for any of the uh, following um, improvements. So that would be about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we could transfer uh, from Hubbard to Vets Park. Country Club Road, uh, we left a hundred thousand dollars in there. We don't, I don't believe we need to, uh, you know, but just until the transfer is done, uh, that we would, uh, that would be about one point eight million. And then uh, Long Hill Soccer Complex, uh, that's about one point uh, three, four in there. And then for McCutcheon Park, we're pretty much done out there. That was uh, the project that we did over the last couple of years. Uh, we do have some improvements left to make to the uh, baseball field, some infield uh, improvements, maybe some fencing. Uh, so I left about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars left in that line item. And then Harbor Park, we're pretty well, we're pretty close to being done at uh, Harbor Park. Uh, so I was saying we could transfer two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of there, and that still uh, leaves about three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, if there's any additional items that come up. I'm not sure if the benches have been included yet, so that might be one, um, uh, you know, some of the items that we might do a change order uh, to complete. So I'm suggesting that uh, we transfer approximately four point three million dollars out of those other lines into the Vets Park line. So then you can see uh, summary table over here uh, with the low bid with ten percent contingency and inspection fees. That's the eight point eight five, eight point nine million essentially. So we have about, just over a million dollars in Vets Park. Uh, proposing that we do the four point three million dollar transfer. We have two hundred thousand dollar grant from CDBG towards the um, splash pad spray equipment. Uh, so that would be a total of five point five nine million, leaving about three point three million left to be covered by the road bond, which would cover a lot of the site work, the access road, drainage, uh, um, improvements that are, you know, related to uh, um, road and connect connectivity uh, to the accessway. And so that's how um, suggesting that we make uh, you know, you take into consideration uh, to be able to fund this project.
So this is a significant um, um, a vote tonight. So I wanna make sure our, our council is fully um, ha- has chance to ask all the questions that are important.
Well, it, it seems to me, uh, Gene, that um, the way uh, Director Holden explained it, these funds are in excess. So, most of these projects are nearly either done or nearly done with uh, a few minor additions that need to be completed. So it's utilizing the bond money in a very responsible manner
Yeah.
in order to do our uh, vets pool.
Yeah.
And um, I, I think the public would, would accept this.
Yeah.
We're using money that's already been allocated, and at the same time, we have not diminished any access, accessibility or use of those previous areas. And Chris, could you add this to the, why you're making hard copies for us?
Sure.
Thank you. That's just my view, you know, Gene, there's, there's twelve views up there, so.
Yeah, I, I, I uh, I think it's well thought out. Um, I, I, I was in the discussion, but all of us have been in the discussion about, about um, the splash bed and, and uh, pool. And for a long time, we were counting on the access, access money at um, uh, Country Club Road and um, Long Hill, the soccer fields, because those fields uh, could not access the bond money because of status of the artificial surface. And now that sale has been approved. Um, so that money is clearly um, um, a um, a necessity and it's um, very, very uh, well thought out, I feel, in terms of, of the priority. There's no question that Vets Pool and Splash Pad has been a, 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 perhaps a number one priority from our residents' point of view, you know? But it, it, it's way, it's way up there in the top, but maybe not number one. Packinney Sports Complex was huge, huge uh, project.
And to the chair, I, Director Leckwitz has raised her hand if you wanna recognize her.
Go ahead.
I just had one quick question, Chris, about um, McCutcheon Park improvements. Um, this was before your time, there was conversation with Director uh, Russo to improve the public bathrooms. Um, I don't believe those, that was completed due to the timeline. Um, is that under consideration in terms of this money, or I'm not sure where the money was earmarked for that?
Sure, and this is over at the uh, lifeguard house, right? The lifeguard building?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see why, cause we still have the hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars left in the line. Um, that uh, you know, we would be able to still utilize for any, any uh, any of the work out there. So I, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to uh, make the improvements to the ball fields as well as uh, the bathrooms for sure.
Yeah, yeah. And there was some discussion uh, back then, when Director uh, Russo was there, that some of that work could be done by city staff.
Correct.
So, it even, you know, the plumbing, painting.
Yeah.
Uh, some of the carpentry work that has to be done. Is that still, is that still possible?
I believe so.
Okay. Um, so, I uh, I personally feel this should go to the councils uh, in, in June for approval.
Mm-hmm. And now through the chair, I did check with uh, the general counsel and because it's transfers within a bond, I did not think that it was necessary to go to council, but whatever, whatever your pleasure is, I can confirm.
Answers before, so.
Right.
So, um, the road bond would have to go to council, wouldn't it?
Uh, nope, because we, it's, it's um, uh, it is Walnut Grove Road, so it's the road through the park. Uh, that's on the road bond.
Okay.
Uh, that's all kind of encompassing with the site work. Uh, it's all related to the site work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the, as far as the benches for Harbor Park, we had talked about a couple of those rainbow benches.
Yeah.
Is that still in the works?
Definitely, I mean, with this work, we haven't, we, I don't think we've ordered any.
Yeah, I think it was nine benches.
We still have almost three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Above and beyond our current scope out there, so that, that would, uh, should be sufficient for the work we have left.
And the um, the water uh, a- a drainage uh, work that, that um, is that complete? Or is that gonna be any, any additional cost at, at Harbor Park?
At Harbor Park?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe there may be a little bit additional work on that corner.
Yeah.
Uh, when we figure out the, what, the, what to do there, I think that would probably be, and I think that's probably in the twenty to thirty thousand dollar range at most. Mike, you want, can you confirm that? Do you think somewhere in that range?
Um, well, so yeah, we've been working on that design to try to get it down to as, as little as possible in terms of the steel grading that we're looking at using. Uh, just because of the cost of, of steel and, and other uh, metals, but um, I, I'd be cautious to say twenty to thirty thousand. I, I think it may, it may actually be more than that. Um, we're, we're wrapping up that design probably this week and have that to Gerber, hopefully by the end of the week, so we'll, we'll get their pricing. Um, but in order to, to do this, this design, um, and to have it supported on a proper structure, we actually have, we're looking at helical piles, which are, I'm sure many of you are familiar with. Basically big screws that go into the ground, um, and then have a supportive plate at the top, so they can support a beam that the grates would sit on. Um, cause we can't really pour a concrete footing, a traditional footing, with the high water table that's gonna co- you know, move up and down. Uh, that footing would be incredibly deep and there'd be a lot more concrete, so um, we're wrapping up that design, like I said. Um, but I, I'm, I'm cautious just because of, you know, the volatile nature of bids right now, uh, to really put a number on it.
Sure. And through, and uh, through the chair, uh, this was um, helical piles we used on uh, part of the uh, Palmer Field Project.
Yeah.
The uh, with the electrical room down in that section, I was kind of uh, having a little challenge, uh, that we had to prop up a little bit, so we've used these in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, I think with your, with your two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars remaining, if that is, is the number, I, I don't see that project uh, utilizing all that.
Yeah. And that include, yeah, I don't either, so. So it looks like um, uh, I, I think it's very well thought out um, plan. And um, so if I can have a motion then?
Uh, Gene, before, before I make the motion, um, just based on what um, Chris Holden said, um, you know, I have respect for the council, but I think we need to move this forward, us, because timing is everything, as you know. So um, maybe a report from you or something?
We, yeah, we, we can, and um, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
Figure that, you and I'll talk offline, okay?
Okay, and I'll make a motion that we moved and transferred the funds as delineated by Director Holden, uh, Hope.
Okay.
Chris Holden, um, so that we can move this project forward.
Alright, can I have a second?
Second, Councilman Ford.
Okay. Um, any further questions? And I think Chris was planning, I know this has taken a lo- uh, taken uh, a, a lot of consideration on his part uh, to get this worked out. This is extremely important.
Through the chair, just one quick clarifying.
Sure.
Uh, there's no other process or commission or committee we have to go through to move this money or to add this, this project to that bond, correct?
Uh, so this, so sorry, through the chair, uh, this project's already included in the bond, it's just a matter of moving money from line, uh, from the various lines. But I will confirm uh, with Diana and the general counsel again, uh, if you wanna make the motion uh, predicated on having confirmation uh, of what the process is.
Okay, I'll add that in on my motion, that is checked, you know, we'll check it through finance and one more uh, look at uh, GCC, General Counsel. Perfect.
Right.
Yes. And I'll second the.
General counsel, what am I, you know, I, I don't think it involves FNG, because it's already part of the bond. Funds.
Uh, and then just through the chair, I, as you noticed in the uh, bid summary, there was a hefty uh, contingency, so that, you know, the, the, the project is seven points, you know, seven point eight million, but we put a ten percent contingency on there, so we do have some wiggle room. It's not like we're down to the penny. Uh, if we do make changes or what have you, uh, we would, this transfer allows for, you know, ten percent, which is nearly a million dollars, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars uh, that we would have. Um, and if we don't utilize that, obviously we put that back into uh, other projects. Uh, but that, that is uh, you know, a good contingency in case, you know, any price increases or, you know, any changes.
Perfect.
Perfect. Other questions? Alright. The news for Vets Pool. Uh, so those who, um, we had a motion and a second, and so those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries, thank you. And motion carries, thank you. Uh, okay, we're going to move to multi-use trail.
Um so I don't have too much update on the multi-use trail. Um we're still just kind of working through the process of getting the. Archaeological consultant approved so they can do their work. Um I think uh Chris, you had said it's it's looking like it's close. Um so once we get that approval, that'll kind of jumpstart that work so that we can really determine. What if any changes are going to be required, um depending on what they find um in their research and in the field studies. Uh we have continued um recently to be looking at the overall new field corridor study as a group of us met. Uh I don't know now, maybe it's been three or four weeks ago, probably. Um so we'll probably be looking to schedule another meeting. Um of that, you know, an informal group so that we can just touch base and. Um kind of circle the wagons again and look at, you know, what's the other alternative ways that we can really connect? To the downtown or into Vets Park and continue the new field corridor that doesn't necessarily impact as many. Properties or private properties um when we're trying to use the Eastbrook Corridor, East Swamp Brook Corridor. Um and the sewer easement areas.
If I could just jump in here quickly, uh we heard, we had some very exciting news uh over the last couple of weeks with the um River Cog. And then with John Hall, I, we did secure funding uh for a corridor study. Uh for a combination of Newfield Street, that would be, you know, complete street, Newfield Street, so uh. Pedestrian safety, vehicle safety, and then also it includes a path study to get from Portland. To Meriden, uh as the loop, remember, we've been talking about this, I I Eastern Greenway. And that this would be the loop around Hartford somewhere, I forget the total miles, but so that uh. That we do have funding available uh to do a corridor study and also it's going to include, we were able to get. They were able to uh get two different grants, actually, one, I think a federal grant for maybe three hundred, three fifty. And then there was another state grant of about five hundred thousand dollars, so uh they were lucky to get some extra money. Um to cover uh, you know, both uh the study and then also hopefully some design. Eventually, when we get the formal approval. I will take this through the grant uh grant uh uh co- grant process. Uh and then I, one thing that we'll just have to understand and will make clear to the council is that some of the money. Is going to include a portion of Portland uh going across the bridge and then connecting uh to Middletown, so that's. You know, it won't be a hundred percent coming to Middletown, but we'll be overseeing uh the funds.
That's a hu- huge, huge, hugely uh important news. Really can help this whole thing. And it was always our goal to connect to uh. Uh to the trail uh on the other side of the river.
Yeah.
So.
Hopefully, I would love to be, sorry. I would love to be able to connect to uh for the uh the uh landfill trail. And then use utilize the railroad bridge uh from the landfill to get down to Newfield Street. Uh hopefully, that'll be part of the study and we can figure out a way to either connect to the rail bridge or have that uh. Um you know, be abandoned or what have you to make it a rail to trail, uh because that would be, that would be a great area to be able to fight through.
Did you say that that the Portland connection is to the airline trail?
Yeah, yeah, that, yes, to the airline trail.
Yeah.
So they have a small, they have a portion, maybe a mile, maybe, uh in Portland, that still needs to be.
Right.
Completed to get to the bridge.
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty impressive, and that's a twenty. That side of the river, I think the trail is like twenty, twenty miles long, isn't it, uh Mike?
Yeah, it's it's a, it's a big loop.
Yeah, yeah. And it's really well done, and so it's a good thing, great.
Yeah.
All right, and any other questions?
How much was the grant that you would get?
Uh so I I don't have it, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars.
Beautiful.
Uh but I'll 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 try to get the uh what the actual number is and I'll get that out to everybody.
That's outstanding.
Right.
Wow.
That's really great news. Um so we're go- we're gonna move to fencing and scoreboard. Um. Finally have a picture. Kathy will be happy to see this. So it's in her her backyard now.
We were checking it out today.
So I don't know how well you can see this, but this red line here is the proposed fencing, you had a gate up in this area. Or six inch opening, no gate, it looks like. And so this field will be pretty much accessible. And then also you have a fence along this side and then down this side. There's no proposed fence on the school side of the uh field. And then uh so you get openings up in this area to to allow for the parking uh for people to get in onto the field.
Right.
Chris, is the fence on the inside of the trees or on the outside of the trees?
Uh it looks like they are on the inside of the trees, field side, field side.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's this cardboard, both?
Okay.
Uh. I would imagine that it was gonna be over here somewhere. Oh, no, there we go, right at the end of the field, right up here.
And it's on the other side of the.
Looks like it's on the other side of the driveway, yeah.
That was always the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right there. It's not a very big scoreboard, but it's very visible.
Uh chair?
Yes.
Um for Chris and Kathy's edification, I got confirmation from the Rotary Club. That they're ordering the two benches from Memorial Park as well as the plaque. And you can see it, it's right across the street there, the up uh right there where Chris is.
Right in here.
And then we'll just be waiting for Public Works to lay down the patio, so. That should be coming uh probably midsummer, I would suggest, but. I just wanted you to know, Mr. Chair, as well as uh committee, that this is all going to come nicely.
Great, great. And just so that the um commission remembers back in the original design. Um we um asked the building committee for a BIM and building committee. To uh. To support, and they did right from the get-go.
Yeah.
This would be a a multi-purpose field, not only soccer, but um a city field. Uh off off school time, um because we we need, we need a new field and that was part of the feasibility study. Uh it's it, so the bond paid for the um irrigation. And and paid for the fencing and paid for um the scoreboard. So to match up with uh what what's what's uh in place at Peking. So it's a great, it's a great victory for shared service.
Absolutely.
Our our rec department can use their off-school time if they choose to, whatever, you know. And the summers and such. But it will be heavily used, for sure.
Oh, absolutely.
So it'll be hard to get uh playtime in there.
Chris, what is the timeline in terms of the the field being ready and the fence being up?
Well, I can answer from the O and G's point of view. Um the sod that went in la- last fall is ready to play on. But the new sod, we have to be careful with. So I don't know how to answer that. Pretty, I guess sod, Chris, takes about six months to see.
I would say, uh let's uh utilize our expert uh consultant here, Mike, what is for sod? Uh how long do we gen- generally let it grow before you can play on it? Is it about six months or?
Uh no, it's six, can you hear? Uh six months would be uh, you know, a great time to wait. But you don't necessarily have to, so um depending on conditions, it could, the sod can uh kind of root itself in within a month.
Great.
So.
Especially with irrigation, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, irrigation definitely will help uh if they keep off the mowers um till it really starts to root and get in there. Um I would, yeah, I would say about a month or so.
Right. Okay. Other questions on that? So in our next meeting, I hope we can have the invoice from Atlas to approve, so we get this fencing up. And scoreboard. All right, so now we're on other, and uh why don't you include everything together on uh highway parks? Overtime and building.
I've got the two, two other items, if I could. There's one, um every year we do um uh the cash show, equipment show.
Yeah.
Usually, uh we send somewhere ten to fifteen people over to the show. I'm not sure if I need to get permission or authorization to send people, but it's forty dollars a ticket. So I would say if you could authorize up to fifteen tickets, we may not use all those. Uh but if you could authorize up to fifteen tickets or six hundred dollars uh for our uh mechanics and some of our uh. Beep people to be able to go over and uh see what we've got for new equipment.
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second? All right, any discussion? Uh those in favor then? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained, motion carries. What what was the second?
So why, this is, uh we're coming up on Public Works Week. Uh so starting uh Sunday to Sunday, uh we have a National Public Works Week, so we're excited. One thing that we're going to try to do today uh this year uh to celebrate our workforce. Is have like an open house uh down at City Yard.
Right.
Trucks out, we'll have families, you uh so it'll be just for uh, you know, city employees, uh you know, public works employees. Uh and their families to be able to come down, uh you'll see what all the equipment is that, uh you know, their parents use. Uh uh you know, what, maybe what plot truck, hey, this is the plot truck I gotta sit in for eighteen hours at a time. You know, so they can, the family can get a good sense of uh, you know, what what's uh what goes into uh their jobs. I'll send this out uh to the commission, uh maybe all the council, let's see if anybody is interested in uh joining us, but. You know, I thought it would be good, especially after the last couple of years uh to celebrate our workforce, uh you know, and how hard they've worked. And how, you know, dealing with all the challenges. Uh so this will be parks, sanitation, you know, all of all of public works.
Yes.
We can show our hot box.
Yeah. Yeah. And I know, I know Gabriel is gonna want to go.
That'd be awesome, yes, Sunday, May twenty-second, from twelve to two. We're gonna have a little cookout, some hot dogs and hamburgers and uh what have you, so yeah, we're very excited about it.
Right.
Perfect.
All right.
That's it.
And then, and and uh anything to report on overtime and parks division and. Building permits?
Sure, so um for overtime, uh parks obviously is uh really um get some overtime going right now. Getting all the fields up to play, uh you know, making them ready for play in between games, cleaning up uh the picnic areas. Um so they've been, they've been very busy. Uh also with our um uh public works, streets and highways. Uh we've been doing some overtime to get some of our early streets ready for paving. Uh we're close to to paving, we have. Um they're ready for paving, so we've done the fine grading, we've done the pavement removal, milling. Uh so we find that if you work, you know, a couple of extra hours of overtime, it really uh uh increases the productivity. Um for the day, so that's what we've been doing over the past, like, you know, two, three, four weeks uh to make sure that we can get the roads up and running.
Yes.
Uh the, obviously, uh building permits are really going strong.
Right.
Um the uh, I think it's like seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is the uh current total for uh permit fees for the year. And again, you know, we've estimated, what, five hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Thousand is our initial, so yeah, so yeah, so sorry, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh so far in uh permit revenue.
Wow.
Yeah, it's good news.
And we still got a few more weeks.
Yeah, another month and a half or so, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that new science center they're building up at Wesleyan must have given us a good amount, too.
Yeah, yep, definitely.
Perfect.
Any final questions then? Any questions that weren't covered uh um in the agenda before we adjourn? I don't hear any, so I think everyone can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Councilman Pusina, and thank you, Chris, for getting them documents to us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Kathy, for joining us.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, have a great one.
Bye-bye.
Stay healthy and safe, everyone.
Meeting adjourned at seven thirty-nine.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Great job.